Good evening, everyone. The time is seven oh three. I might call this meeting to order. Vice President Ferguson, could you do the invocation, please?
Yes, good evening, everyone. Thank you, Lord. Father God, we just give you the glory and the honor tonight, and we just thank you for keeping us safe another day. Father, we just thank you that you are our beginning, you're the beginning and the finisher of our faith, and we just trust in you. And Father, I just ask that you would be with us. In the name of Jesus, we ask, Father God, that you, your presence will be in our midst in this meeting tonight, and that you would grace us with your peace, your wisdom, your counsel, as we work on the business of the city. And Father God, I ask that you would render peace and comfort to the families who who experienced loss of loved ones this weekend in the city of Glen Arden. And Father God, we just give you the glory, honor, and praise, and we thank you. In Jesus' name, amen and amen.
Clark, would you do the roll call, please?
Sure. Councilwoman Fareed, I believe, is on vacation. Councilwoman Guillaume. Council President, my last conversation with her, she was ill, so I'm not certain that she'd be able to join. Councilman Hairston.
I'm here.
Councilman Herring.
Here.
Councilwoman Jones.
Good evening, everyone. Here.
Council Vice President Ferguson.
Here.
And Council President Curtis.
Here.
You have four present. You do have a quorum.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda? Is there a second?
Second.
Any opposition or amendments? None by unanimous consent. The agenda is hereby adopted. First on agenda are the meeting minutes for September the eighteenth, regular session, and September twelfth, public hearing. Council members, as I believe you recall, last time that there was a loss of data. So we're going back to redo the minutes that are missing from, I believe, July and August. Council Clerk, what, what, okay, July and August. So hopefully, we can, we can catch up and have those for the next agenda. Next up on agenda is the, given pronounces wrong, Passoa Construction, request for access to city property for Sorry, what was? Request for access to city property for construction storage for MLK Highway work for up to three hundred and sixty-five days. Madam Clerk, is that a presentation?
They were supposed to be, Mr. Curtis, they were supposed to be present this evening, the representative from Passoa. And I'm not sure if I see anyone here who might be representing them, who was in attendance at the moment. They had submitted a letter that should be in your packages that requested access to city property or other property along Martin Luther King Highway to be able to store their equipment to start on the milling and resurfacing of MLK Highway from Ardwood, Ardmore down to Greenleaf.
And where do they want to store it?
They wanted to start immediately, store it, start storing immediately. They, they actually started today on doing the storm drain work on MLK Highway.
But they want to store the equipment where?
They're looking, they had, in the letter that they sent, they had two locations, both locations that they wanted, not just one or the other. And that is next to the Seven Eleven, which is owned by the American Legion. And then the other is city property on the others, in between the church and the Horace and Dicky's strip there.
Vice President Ferguson.
City Manager Hobbit, who is, I, I see vehicles there now. They've been there, seem like a week. Who's there now, over there by Horace and Dicky?
Well, on the other side, you know, the, the, in between the church and there have been cars parked there. I don't know who those belong to. They were there this morning when I drove by. But that, the actual vehicles for the work, most of them were out on the street with the, you know, the cones marking off the one lane.
No, these, 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 I mean, they are cars that I think some of the patrons of Ms. Smith. But these are utility or vehicles, trucks, with beds on them and everything. They've been there even when we were talking about them last week. And matter of fact, I saw some pulling in last week as if they were retired for the day.
Yeah, they, those, those trucks were actually, you know, they were, should not have been there. They were working on gas lines, and their last day was on Friday, because when we went over there to talk to Mr. Rollins, I believe was his name, from Passoa Construction, he said that that they had been storing their, it was a spool of that was out there. It actually belonged to the folks who were working on the gas lines. And I think probably we're going to have to monitor people using that space when, you know, we see them there, because I probably need to put up a sign that says city property. So that there isn't folks just willy-nilly coming to set up there for whatever. But Passoa is ready to move forward on the, you know, the total two point seven million. They have three hundred and sixty-five days to do the work, and they started today, as they told me and Mr. Mr. Simpson last week, that they would be starting, they wanted to start on Tuesday, Monday, rather, Monday, yeah, today's Monday, on work on the highway. And they did that, and they are doing the, it's clearly, it's clear that they're doing the storm drains first.
Councilwoman Jones.
Yes, Council, City Manager Hobbit, I thought that the persons that were there about two or three weeks ago were people dropping cable for five G, because it looked like small cabling that they were putting in the ground.
Okay, I think if Mr. Simpson's here, he can answer, because that may have been happening too, but there was also some gas line work that there were some trucks. So I guess we're going to have to monitor that on our, on our, you know, on our land there between the church and the business area. Charles, can you address anything beyond the gas company?
Good evening. Initially, it was telecommunication for five G, and I think some upgrades with Verizon. I think that was some of the initial tubing, and they were there for about a week. They came on and then they were doing some staging, and I certainly had mentioned to them that this is city property. And then that's when we met Mr. Passoa. I believe there was some gas work that was done in between that time or right around there. But the majority of that equipment was for the telecommunications or that five G work.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Councilman Harry.
Yeah, yeah, I was going to follow up on that, because again, they were out today running cable right here by my house. I don't know, you know, and I think it's Verizon running fiber optics. And we do need to know who's coming into city and who's doing what, because we got to hold them accountable for any damage that they may do to, do to our streets and everything. I mean, it's constantly coming. I mean, they're digging up, they're digging holes all over the place in the, in the community, you know? And if they leave in it, you know, there's a sinkhole, which usually happens after they dig, it sinks it back in. They need to come back out prepared. We need to know who will come after when it happens, because right now, we don't know if it's Verizon or if it's the gas company, so. You know, but like I said, they were, I mean, rolling, pulling cable today, you know, so and I know they were over by the Johnson and, I mean, Glen Arden Park and Hayes, I think, one day last week, digging up and running stuff, so. And we definitely need to know who's coming into the city and what they're doing when they, when they are in here. But yeah, they have been staging over in that, in that location for, I think it's, I think it's been longer than a week to tell you, too, because I know I was over there about, then me and City Manager and Mr. Simpson was over there about a week or so, I mean, about, almost about two weeks ago, I think it was, a week and a half ago or something. So, all right, thank you.
Ms. Sabata, is there anything?
Well, I, I see later in the agenda, there's an item on seven oh, yeah, seven oh four resurfacing, Mr. Herring had requested. Do you want to reserve?
We can actually address it right now, since we're here. Because I think what we need to look at also is that he's, he's actually asking what, what will we get, what do we want in return for him using our property? And I think that we need to save what we want. It's a two point, over two million dollar, but, I mean, a two million dollar project that needs to be done, because seven oh four between Almarwick Road and Greenleaf Road has not been done since I really been sitting on this council. They very seldom do it, and now that they get ready to do it, we need to get it all done. But I still think, I mean, this is an opportunity to make, I mean, if they're going to store it and we want to rent it, I think, for a year, I think we need to ask them for the twenty-five K that we're looking for from the county, you know, if they're going to, if they want to use the space, utilize the space, I think that's only reasonable. You know, so I think we need to look at that and see what we want to request from them in a way of money that we can put towards the farmer's market, save us some time from having to go through all these other things and apply for this and doing nonprofits and all that other stuff. So I think we need to reach out to them and find out what they're open to provide us as a city for allowing them to use our property. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilman Harry. Councilwoman Jones.
But even that, hmm, even though they use that property, this is a, this is a subcontractor to the state of Maryland, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, so can we really negotiate with them, some type of, or leverage with them, some type of, I mean, this is, this is a first for me. I've never known that you could leverage with a subcontractor doing state work to get monies for, for different things. I'm, I mean.
Well, if you, if you, let, let me give you a little bit of information from that. You know, this gentleman showed up here at City Hall and presented the drawings and wanted to know pretty much what, what the city would be open to. And then we went out on site there in, in the city property and between the church and Horace and Dicky's. And basically, the gentleman, who I guess is the foreman, said that they know that they'll need to give the city something, and then, of course, agree, they would agree that whatever they did to that site in terms of the damage that might have been done due to storage, they would restore it to whatever it is that we wanted it to be restored to. So I think that's negotiation point. Now, obviously, the, the site that they want, which is the American Legion, we just, I guess, basically need to refer them over to folks over at the, the post. And I'm not sure who that would be, but somebody I'm sure can tell me who to advise them to go to for, for that.
And I think in that case, with the American Legion and with the property that we want to extend, if we don't get anything other than for them to, to asphalt it, you know, dig it up, asphalt it, and even for the American Legion, that, I think that would be a improvement to their area and to, to get it better as a parking space with, you know, with ass, new asphalt and striping and everything that would bring that area up. If, if that's what the American Legion would like to do, they may want to take the property and sell it, I don't know. But to, to enhance the property, to make it look a lot better than the overgrowth that we're seeing on that property, you know, maybe that's a negotiation point we can get from them. If, if we don't get anything more than getting both of those areas resurfaced and striped. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jones. Any other discussion on this topic?
Is there any direction to us in terms of, you know, do you, do you want to have a discussion and vote on it at your regular session, or what, what's your inclination? In terms of process for us to be, they're going to probably, since I don't see them here yet, they may call tomorrow and say, what did you all decide? Should we refer them down to the public hearing and the regular session to? Or what would you like to do?
I mean, I, I think it's only a consensus. We're not putting forth the resolution or anything. Like, Councilwoman Jones.
I would like to see what is, what is it that they can really offer us, you know, what is it that they, they can really offer the city for the use of the site? Because like I said, this is a first for me ever hearing of, and I'm not saying that it doesn't happen, but a subcontractor doing a, a, a state project and them offering, you're saying they're offering monies to do this, and where, well, maybe as a company, they have the monies to do that or out of the contract, you know, because if they go back to the state, you know, are they under the state contract, can they, you know, offer a municipality or anybody monies to use their property under the contract that they're under? Those are the things that I'd like to know, but what is it that they can't offer? You know?
Okay, I, I think they are under the gun to get this going and to get it finished on time, and that's why I think the offer may be being made as a suggestion in terms of, you know, if we can help expedite so that they can have some spot where they can store their equipment as well as the portapodies and, you know, material as in stone for road construction kind of, kind of stuff. If that helps.
What's the term again?
It's, it's three hundred, their contract is three hundred and sixty-five days with MDOT, and they're saying they plan to have it done in seven months.
Okay.
And I don't have no, I have no familiarity with this construction company. I don't think Charles does either, so in terms of, you know, the accuracy of that, that I, you know, we can figure, we can get a whole MDOT to confirm the year, but, you know, I think that they want to, they're under the gun to get started and get it done.
Yes, because when we, when we had, when I was, I went over there when they had to discuss with them, and it sounds like basically what it is, they put a bid in for the contract, which is, I think it's two point seven million dollars. Is that correct, City Manager? And they got to get it done for that two point seven million dollars in three hundred and sixty-five days, and I think the state doesn't really matter. I mean, I think the state, I mean, they, they care what they do and they care that they do a good job, but if they got to lease space, which places do lease space to store their equipment on, then you know, that's what they can do, and I'm sure that's within their, within one of the requirements in the budget, so that they don't have to be moving the equipment back and forth. And he's saying that basically, if he can get every, get the staging area that he needs right along seven oh four, he probably can get it done in seven months versus the one year. He said that's what he's shooting for, but you know, you never know what the weather's going to do. So, so I'm, I'm sure the state is, he's well within, he's well aware of what he can and cannot do, you know, under the bid that he, he put in for that proposal.
Okay.
So, all right, thanks.
And also, I'd kind of concur. I know contractors would have some latitude as it relates to whatever their contract is, and they have money set aside to be able to store things to, to do whatever is necessary. I don't know from the legality of the state of Maryland how that affects things, but.
Yeah, so, thank you, Mr. Simpson. If if you, if someone does open their mic, it would be helpful if you addressed the chair, which is the Council President, and be acknowledged by the Council President, so you could, so you can speak, because if you don't, then it's just someone opened their mic who we don't know and just starts talking, and we miss some of what you have to say. So if the, the you or staff member has something to say, that's fine. They just need to address the chair, so the chair could acknowledge them, and then they can, you know, speak their piece. Councilwoman Ferguson.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to know, were, was the invitation extended out to this company to be in this meeting tonight?
Yes.
And you haven't heard anything, so why they are not here?
No.
All right, thank you.
Okay. So thinking about it, it probably would be a memorandum of understanding or some, some type of contract that we'll have to, you know, construct with them to store their equipment and make sure that if they do have, if there is any damage to whatever part they're in, then restore it. So as it relates to negotiations on what we want, I think that's probably best served to do in closed session as, as it relates to like terms and things like that. So, and I know we're going to adjourn in a closed session today anyway, so if we want to speak about, you know, what the city wants, then we can talk about that piece then, and we can have some direction from there. Any objections to that?
Nope.
Okay. Next up is legislation. So we have several pieces of legislation on the docket for tonight. So let's go one by one. Resolution R oh three, two thousand and twenty-four, resolution to authorize legal work to form a nonprofit, five oh one, C three. I know this is back on here. I don't know if there's much to discuss on this. I mean, it's still open for discussion for council members, but I think this is on here just because we're going to make a decision at the next regular session. So it's giving council members some time to dig deeper into what we discussed last time. But still, are there any questions or comments on this particular legislation?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Harry.
Yes. I just want to know, does the attorney have the other piece of legislation that we passed for farmers markets about establishing a committee and all of that other stuff? I want to know if he knows everything that's already being put in place, you know, with the farmer's market, with the ten-member committee that, that resolution formed, and now we're trying to do this, and the whole legality of, of, of this nonprofit and this committee that we have already that's for farmers market. I'm going to know, does he have that, has he, does he have that piece of legislation? He doesn't, can we send that to him and get his opinion on that piece of legislation along with what we're getting ready to do here? Because again, I see this as a serious conflict of interest when it comes down to, you know, a nonprofit organization that's going to actually be running autonomously like the Housing Authority down the road. All right, thanks.
Thank you, Councilman Harry. I guess, I do believe it's gone to the attorney. City Manager Bod, do you have any more information on that?
I don't recall if, if the resolution was sent to them as a part of looking at the nonprofit question, but certainly we can double-check that tomorrow.
Okay. All right, Mr. Harry, I do know that I will check back with you, because unfortunately, sponsors aren't here at the time. At least sponsor. All right. Any other comments on this piece of legislation? Here, now we'll move on to a resolution accepting cost proposal from Charles P. Johnson, Jr. and Associates Engineers for Analysis of All City Streets Contract. I think there was a piece that we were looking into that caused us to fall on the October docket. Are there any comments or questions as it relates to this piece of legislation?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Harry.
Yes, on this piece of legislation, it is saying that we're going to take the money for this from the engineering line under the administration's budget, when I know that I passed a resolution, how much is this for? Yeah, I passed a resolution, R twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-two, that set aside fifty thousand dollars for street assessments. So I'm, I'm understanding why we're taking out the administration budget when I've already set money aside for this to be done through the Opera Funds.
Ms. Sabata, did we change the, the GLA County line to reflect that it's coming out of the Opera Funds?
The fifty thousand he may be talking about, I, I think we were under the impression, and Mr. Stewart can correct me if I'm wrong, that those funds were related to stormwater kinds of evaluations related to the whole rebate program for stormwater. If that fifty thousand is available for this, I think that would be a good, a good fit.
Listen, Ms. Harry.
Yes, I mean, it is. We passed a resolution, R twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-two, which set that aside for the Opera money. So it should be there, and if it's not listed in the budget, that might be another amendment that we need to make to the budget, because that, those funds should have been there for for the Opera money to be used for a, a street assessment.
Okay, well, we, if that money is there, Ms. Sabata, I don't doubt that it is. If we could just update it, because I think that was all that was missing last time. Just make sure that the money is coming from the correct accounting line, so I think that's an easy fix. Councilman Harry, is all your, were all your needs addressed?
Yeah, thank you.
Any other comments as it relates to this piece of legislation? Okay, moving on to ordinance for budget reallocation, which will follow the, I'm sorry, yes, emergency ordinance for Thanksgiving luncheon, attorney bills for the charter work, stormwater separate out to intergenerational poverty fund, nutrition room renovation and senior program funding settlement, senior program nutrition center, and add additional appropriation allocation to the capital budget for engineering services from highway user funds. Ms. Sabata, has there been a mock-up of the, the actual budgeting piece that, you know, the numbers that will?
Yes.
Okay.
There is an, there is an ordinance attached to the memo dated from May, September twenty-nine.
Okay, I just wanted to, I'm sorry. This, I have to pull it up again. One second. I don't see it. Where is it?
It's a memo, engineering study, analysis of condition of streets and sidewalks, and emergency, emergency budget ordinance, budget reallocations. And it's about three pages long. I don't know, maybe Robin can pull it up?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. Council Clerk, if you could pull it up, that'd be great. For some reason, I can't, I do not see it. But I still open the floor for comments from council, if there are any.
Mr. President.
Councilman Harry.
Yes, that's, I mean, there's a number of items actually wrong in this, because when I look at the budget, there's a hundred thousand dollars that says stormwater runoff. That's actually the Opera money that I had set aside to do a stormwater runoff assessment along Delwood, Fisk Avenue, and some other areas in the city that we were having runoff problems with. There is no, the, the program that, I don't see where the program that Councilwoman Fareed is, you know, the sponsor of the stormwater grant program that she has is even in this budget. So, I mean, there's a number, I mean, that's, yeah, that's a problem with that. Also, they're lumping monies, monies together. Like, the speed bump pilot program should be a separate line in and of itself, because we passed, me, Councilwoman Ferguson, and Councilman Hairston Councilwoman Ferguson and Councilman Harrison passed a, I mean, introduced a resolution for that program, which was twenty five thousand dollars. And then, and also is a another uh, fifty thousand dollars that that I talked about earlier about this uh, street assessment, that should be a separate line. But there is no stormwater management grant program, I mean, being funded, and I I don't see it in this budget. And if it is, I'd like to know where it is. So I mean, it really needs, it's a couple of lines that really need to be cleaned up in here.
Okay, Mr. Curtis?
Yes, Ms. Abada?
Um, yeah, I I think in terms of the ARPA funds and capital uh, budget uh, that was adopted, there was some items in there uh, that were included uh, that were designated stormwater, and I'm I'm glad Mr. Herring has um, got the history on some of that so that uh, it can be corrected, because uh, you know, that's the way it was adopted when council adopted in July and uh, I think uh, you know, easy to make some corrections, so we can uh, we can uh, be clear on what was supposed to do what. And if the fifty thousand can be used for uh, the um, the the survey work and the hundred thousand, you know, is labeled for stormwater, and it it should be for something else, that would be helpful, so we can fix those. Uh, in in particular, because we were looking for where where did the um, uh, intergenerational poverty fund money? Uh, and we thought it might have gotten real, uh, you know, labeled incorrectly with the stormwater runoff rebates. And so that's why, under American Rescue Plan programs, we uh, we labeled it as intergenerational poverty fund instead of stormwater runoff rebates to residents. So, Mr. Harry, we'd appreciate the, um, you know, the history in terms of when these were done in uh, twenty twenty two, and what should have been brought forward in this budget. Um.
Right.
So, yeah.
Mr. President, man?
Yes, sir.
Um, yeah, so and and you're right, because there is no funding for the intergenerational uh, grant program that we have. And because it's mislabeled as stormwater management runoff, which um, that's only, that only had fifty thousand dollars in it. Um, and the intergenerational, two hundred thousand dollars in it, and that needs to be funded, you know, because we just sent out a whole lot of um, grant applications. But the stormwater grant program is different from the stormwater management runoff uh, money that we have. So, I was actually sending you what I have, um, the resolutions and um, the line items that need to be clarified, because right now, a lot of money is being dumped into one line. Like it says, um, the speed bump pilot program, two hundred ninety two thousand dollars, that's not correct. That program only had twenty five thousand dollars in it. And I'm not sure what the other two hundred ninety two thousand dollars comprised of, if there's other grant programs that we may have had. So, yeah, we really need to look at that and try to, you know, clean this up before we vote on it. Make sure we, our our lines are um, you know, everything's being funded, they need to be funded. Again, right now, we got applications out that's for the intergenerational grant program, but we can't pay that one check because we don't have no funding for it, and it's not in this budget, so. You need to make sure of that.
Uh, Mr. Abada?
Yeah, um, on the last page, the page fifty two of the budget that was adopted, we we do have that capital for speed bump pilot program slash curbs sidewalks. Uh, two ninety two, and that's the money that we're plugging in for sidewalks, um, uh, you know, in the um, in the funds that we're going to spend on uh, road improvements. There is one, as you said, for stormwater runoff at a hundred thousand, and then there's also stormwater runoff rebates to residents' management, uh, management of stormwater, uh, labeled two hundred thousand. So I think that's probably the one that needs to be the intergenerational poverty fund. Uh, and if we can get together with you and just uh, work through these numbers, I think we can get the final budget uh, ordinance um, done and corrected for you for adoption and uh, the regular section.
Uh, Council Vice President Ferguson?
Thank you, Council President. I was looking at the nutrition room renovation for senior program funding. And I I thought the the original plan was a combined um, renovation for both the um, council chambers and the nutritional center, as well as the bathrooms back there, so. Is this something different, or what's going on with this?
Mr. Curtis?
Mr. President?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, the Mr. Harry.
Councilman Harry?
Yes, I assumed that from what we were talking, and the estimates they were talking about, three hundred thousand dollars was was going to go in the council chambers to do the dais and make it updated and all this other stuff. Um, then they were talking about bathrooms and all this other stuff. Um, so I'm, I was assuming that, you know, most of that money was going to go on that side. So, we still need to do some renovations over on in the senior nutrition side for the kitchen and windows and carpet. All of that needs to be done. I mean, I was up there the day when it was raining last weekend, and it was rain just running through the windows. So, I mean, it it needs some major work done in there. Um, even if you have the three hundred thousand dollars, it's not going to be enough, because those windows sit on top of air conditioning units that need to be pulled out. Then it needs to be bricked up, then the windows need to be reset. And I know that's going to be a pretty penny, because you're talking about almost ten windows. And each window has an air conditioning unit in it. So, I was just assuming that the three hundred thousand dollars was just for that one side, because of everything that they're talking about doing, pulling out the whole thing, putting up plexiglass and uh, uh, the latest um, technology for, you know, today's activities, you know, Wi-Fi and everything else. But if I'm wrong about that, then.
Well, well, actually, um, I don't even know that that three hundred thousand dollars, I don't even know how it um, got to that amount, because we asked for substantially more than that in the beginning when um, um, City Manager Bob was there, we took the tours at the um, the county's um, at their uh, chambers, but and then I mentioned it again, but I don't know how it got that low, but it wasn't even, um, that wasn't uh, nearly the figure that we put in, um, for that amount. And then, um, I guess they would, they started to burst, disperse in money other other ways. But basically, I do have correct, um, that um, nutrition center is horrible, as far as I'm concerned. Um, and we did do a walkthrough with that, with the, with that contractor, and and um, all of, all of what you said is is needed, but um, at this point, because it's only three hundred thousand dollars, which I know they were speaking about a seven hundred uh, thousand dollar. Uh, that was left with the offer money, which I don't know whether that has been dispersed, which we asked for that as well. Um, the only thing I can think of we can do is do a phase one and two, um, and maybe three, put put all of that, but definitely, um, that was the plan for all of that whole uh, lower area to be um, done um, under one contract. But I mean, if you're saying water is pouring in right now, I mean, that's another issue. Um, that, I don't know.
Okay, uh, Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Council President. Yeah, that three hundred thousand dollars that was put in there was the initial seed money to get an architect to come in and give us a design and give us the, uh, an idea of how much it would cost. Uh, when we brought Mr. Romano in, he was actually the contractor that would have done the work, but we needed an architect to come in and look at, that's why we were waiting for the uh, uh, Charles P. Johnson to be um, uh, okayed by this, by the council, the architect, so we could get an architect to come in. That was just the seed money to get it started, and it is for the, and that was a seed money to get it started for that entire area. The three hundred thousand dollars, and and we knew that it was going to be more than that, but that was all we could get out of, you know, the offer money to uh, to do that project. Yes, it's going to take more than that, and all those things that Councilman Herring cited are, do need to be done. So, um, that was, the three hundred thousand dollars was just to get the architect to come in, so we could get started to find out what was needed, to get a design, and and to find out uh, what we needed to do from there. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so I I I mean, I I agree that um, I think whatever we need to do, if if water is getting in there, we need to address that immediately, but I think that's a joint project that needs to be addressed. So if we could get just an assessment of what it is that we want, uh, the outcome, uh, and then as Vice President Ferguson say, just break it out in phases and then do it that way. I mean, I I'm on board with that approach. Um, so I got, I I guess the next steps are um, getting that assessment. Councilman Harry?
Yes, I I actually think it should be two separate projects. I honestly do, because I don't think it's going to take a lot to get the nutrition center up to par versus the council uh, chambers. Um, we're adding, we we're, in council chambers, we're adding a lot of new technology and everything else in there. Um, and I think that, you know, you, we're not even sure how much that's going to cost, since we can only have three hundred thousand dollars, and it's just talking about for an assessment. But I hate to hate, I hate to wait to have that run for the senior nutrition program, for the senior side to be held up due to, you know, a lag on the council side. So I think we need to separate them and see whichever gets started can get started. And so we won't hit, we won't hold up either project. So I think we should really should get a cost on both sides and um, take it from there. Thank you.
Mr. President Ferguson?
Yes, um, I am not understanding what the lag is as as well. I mean, this has been on the table for a couple of years now to me. Um, and so, um, while I do agree, if we have water coming in to the hill, then we need to address that uh, immediately. But um, I'm not even understanding why we are still not um, dealing with the chambers, because after every meeting, I get so many different calls, or, you know, they can't hear, and I mean, so we need to come up with the chambers as well. It's not, um, you know, it's not, it's not good for the, for the um, the citizens, they can't hear, and so that that's that's a priority.
I'm sure to agree. Uh, and so we'll get that assessment, uh, because I was going to say the same thing, Vice President Ferguson, I just, uh, I receive calls all the time about um, uh, you know, citizens not being able to hear us online, and um, I think both, uh, both matters are important, so we should get the assessment and see what we can run with. Any other comments before we move on?
Uh, yeah, Council, Council President?
Uh, Vice President, oh, Vice President, uh, Councilwoman Jones?
Uh, yeah, I just want um, clarity from the city manager concerning uh, the the item that was put in here concerning the nutrition center is, so you're saying you're going to put in a hundred thousand dollars for the nutrition center, or because I I just, let me see, it says, um, on page two expenditures, line C, appropriate a hundred thousand dollars to account for renovations of the nutrition center in the city hall to prepare for senior programming. So, you're putting in an additional hundred thousand dollars for the nu- the nutrition center? And then you're going to start a senior programming, um, is it for both or just to do the renovations?
Mr. Curtis?
Uh, City Manager Haber?
Yep, um, yes, item D in the budget ordinance included fifty thousand for senior programming and a hundred thousand above that, and C was to do there some renovation. And these uh, uh, came out of the um, uh, the meeting with uh, staff. Uh, um, Mr. Herring and um, Council Clerk, myself, uh, and uh, Ms. Fareed were in a meeting last week, and I can send everybody the notes from that meeting, and some of these recommendations came out of that meeting in terms of cleaning out that space uh, and um, identifying those areas that are priorities, including the renovation of the kitchen and dealing with the windows for sure, and the carpeting. Um, there was a sense that we would try to do a cleaning of the carpet uh, uh, to see if that, see what it, that would look like, if that would, um, you know, take care of the immediate uh, picture there, um, get it professionally cleaned by, you know, Stanley Steamer or something to see um, whether or not this carpet could be salvaged for a period of time, or just add that into the to then, in, add that into the project uh, for the nutrition center. Um, and so, um, that's uh, why that this is in there, uh, based on those recommendations for council's consideration.
Okay, so they've cleaned that carpet before, and it always comes back the same way. That carpet is old, that carpet, that whole, that flooring in that area needs to be uh, renovated, it needs to be refurbished, it needs to come out of there. They need, if you're going to make it a nutrition center, I, I mean, for the nutrition center that the council has uh, ask you to plan for, they need new tables and chairs, they need a new kitchen, those bathrooms. If you go in the ba- the women's bathroom, and I would suggest any of the gentlemen to get somebody to take them to the bathroom and have a look at it, that, there's two stalls in that bathroom in the women's, and one of them is so slender, it's about this wide, and the other one is about this wide. That whole bathroom uh, setup needs to be re-renovated to make it ADA compliant. So, yes, I agree with them coming in and sitting down and talking. This is what me and Councilwoman Ferguson have been advocating about since we went to have all these things done with Ms. Barber, to have all of these things done so that that area down there can be re-re renovated and refurbished for whatever purposes that the city wanted it used for. But all of that, the, all of those things down there, that whole, it needs to be gutted, it needs to be um, implode, not imploded, but gutted, and 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 re- and redesigned. And you do that with uh, an architect, you bring an architect in, and they give you a design and show you, you know, how you can re-repurpose the the space. So, I mean, um, that's what the three hundred thousand dollars is for, is to bring in the architect so we can get started. And like Councilwoman Ferguson has said, we've been working on that since be- before, uh, when uh, Ms. Barber was on board with us, you know, that was one of the things we asked for, and we started going and looking at different spaces in different municipalities, in different municipalities, to see how they have refurbished their spaces. So, I I just wanted to know, okay, I kind of understand what you're, what you're trying to do, but this is something that's already, is already there, you know? Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments on the different components of this emergency ordinance? All right, here none, uh, we'll take everything that we discussed here. Um, make sure that it's in the emergency ordinance, and then uh, move forward with each component. All right, moving on to um, an ordinance to amend chapter twenty two, city property guidelines, global positioning system. Any comments on that? I can pull it up, just one second. City, uh, Councilwoman Jones, not sharing my screen so people can see it.
Okay, this ordinance is to amend the um, city property so that we can put uh, uh, GPS on city vehicles. Um, as we stated before, uh, I'm sure the citizens don't had, don't, weren't privy to this, but um, the police cars already have four different ways of being uh, identified as to where they are. GPS is global positioning. Is global positioning, it will, I'm sorry. The global positioning is for uh, the city to be able to locate their vehicles. But as I, as it's been stated, we found that there were four different ways that the uh, police cars are already have these type of systems on it, and to spend this kind of money uh, to have it reinstalled again, I think the monies could be used, that, I mean, if you want to get it for the the public works vehicles, and especially for, maybe for the uh, code enforcement vehicles, uh, because those vehicles don't have that that type of uh, uh, signaling system to be able to know where those uh, vehicles. Because those vehicles don't have that, that type of signaling system to be able to know where those vehicles are. But the police cars, they have, the police officers have to sign into the county as soon as they come on duty because they are dispatch. You know, they have their radios, which also has GPS on it. They have, there's two other ways that you can pick up the police officers. So, I mean, to have global positioning re, and start, I think it's overkill to have it on the police cars when there's already something in place to be able to locate the police cars.
Thank you. Was that all Councilwoman Jones?
Yeah, if I have to come back, I'll raise my hand again. Thank you, sir.
Chief Brian, I see that your hand is raised.
Yes, good evening, everyone. Yes, I had some reservations about this early when it first, it was first brought to my attention because I was unaware of it at first. And of course, I got like ninety percent, close to ninety percent of the fleet belongs to the police department. So I had some reservations about it at first due to the fact that I wasn't aware of it. And once I found out about it, like I said, I don't have a problem with what's trying to be done. I'd just like to be included in anything that involves the police department. And looking at this, it says all city vehicles. And it says thirty, thirty units. I have twenty-two of the vehicles in my fleet. If you do four for code enforcement and four for DPW, which might have more vehicles, that'd be thirty. So when the fleet tries to grow, or DPW tries to go, grow, how does that work past the thirty? For that type of money. And then it says all vehicles. I checked with a couple of chiefs on here, none of the chiefs and the command staff has it on their vehicles in some of these jurisdictions that's listed. So I don't have a problem with it, but I don't see it, especially need for it to be in the chief of police vehicle in my command staff, unmarked vehicles. Basically, GPS for their marked vehicles. And as I stated before, it applies more to DPW and code enforcement because you have multiple drivers utilizing those vehicles. In case some vehicle damage or something like that, you can go back to the global positioning system and find out where the vehicle was at a particular time and all that type of stuff. But if they decide to do it for the police department, at the end of the day, I don't have a problem with it because I'm transparent about it. But I think the chief police captain and lieutenant car with the unmarked vehicle would need it. And you can save those three in case the fleet grows past thirty for the city of Glen Arden. That's all I have.
Thank you, Chief. Councilwoman Jones?
Okay, thank you, Council President. The other question I had to ask the city manager or the chief or you, either if there was some incidents in the city that brought this, that brought this event. Was, was there something that happened? That caused the need, the, the city to see this as a need?
To my knowledge, nothing was brought to my attention. As I stated, when I first learned of this, it was, it was new to me when I heard of it. And I met with the city manager in reference to it to find out what was going on. Because, like I said, almost ninety percent of the fleet belongs to me. So I was unaware of anything going on. I just know it was brought to my attention afterward, after the fact. So we, me and her discussed it and she never advised me anything that was going on in reference to it.
Okay, thank you, sir, Kefort. Because like I'm saying, for seven thousand dollars a year after the first year, as long as we have, that's a lot of money. But maybe the city manager can enlighten, maybe there was something that she knows of that happened or occurred that made the city decide that this is something that we needed.
Yes, sir. The, as you can see from the list of municipalities, it's pretty much standard for most of the smaller ones. I don't know what Greenbelt, Laurel and Bowie do, but you know, where I served in Capitol Heights, we had them on all the vehicles. And there were some occasions in which there were people who were over at the Forestville Mall who shouldn't have been. And we knew that they were there and of course, were able to deal with that in terms of disciplinary actions. So, you know, it is a measure that gives transparency on, and accountability for the use of city vehicles.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President.
All right. Any other comments from council members? All right. Lost the agenda. Here we go. My next up is a resolution about a property tax rebate to Glen Arden homeowners.
I'm sorry, Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman Jones?
I'm sorry, I did have one more question concerning this GPS. The company that you're using, you're there, where the city is using is in Charlotte, North Carolina?
Mr. Curtis?
Yeah, Councilwoman.
I think Mr. Simpson would have to answer that. I'm not aware of where they're located, but I do, I do know that there's a couple of different vendors and some of which our folks are happy with and some they're not. So Mr. Simpson will have to answer the question of where they're located.
I guess the home base of it is in Charlotte, North Carolina. I don't believe they have a local branch.
So we could, the city couldn't find any local vendors?
We didn't look at two others. Their prices were comparable. I think the other company was Samsa. I may be best pronouncing it. And they were out of Minnesota. So I think I had two. And then there was a Verizon rep, links up. And again, I was familiar with it from the other municipality that I worked at. But we can certainly look at other, other vendors, but Verizon as well as Samsa. And if we needed to provide all the specifications, I can certainly make sure we can do that as well, Councilwoman Jones.
Thank you, because I, I think I would like to see three different vendors, because I think seven thousand dollars a year after we pay the initial is quite we're close to eight thousand dollars a year is quite high. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jones. We are now on the resolutions for about a property tax rebate to Glen Arden homeowners. Any questions or comments on this resolution? The council members? Okay, moving on to resolution for state highway. Oh, I'm sorry, I did not see the hand. Councilwoman Jones?
I might have put it up late, Council President, please forgive me. The resolution concerning the property tax rebate. We're, we're going to the state asking for money for a police station. And there are so many issues, just like with the city hall that need to be addressed in the city. Renovations, street repairs, those things that we've been lagging behind in, in the last, and I'll say since two thousand fifteen. I, I, I'm, I'm not understanding, until we get those things caught up to date, I'm, I'm just not. I, I guess I would have to see it in the budget also when the I mean, they put money in the budget for this, but we're trying to put in an elevator. We're trying to renovate area for the seniors. We're trying to improve the streets and sidewalks. It's just so many other things that need to be done before we get into doing tax rebates for homeowners at this juncture. And homeowners, a home, not necessarily homeowners, but property taxes is the basis of where we get most, the bulk of the money for the city. I know that we are, we do have the shopping center now. It's doing pretty well. I'm not sure how much we're ripping from that, but property taxes is where you, you run a municipality or a city from. So we'll wait and see. Thank you. Just my thoughts.
Mr. President, man?
Thank Councilwoman Jones. Yeah, yes, Councilman Harry?
Yes, let me just say this. For eighty years Glenon has existed, for over eighty years Glenon has existed. And it has existed on the backs of its citizens through property tax. That's the number one revenue generator in the city of Glen Arden. Glenon was blessed with four million dollars in opera money, which allowed us to save money on a lot of capital projects that we didn't need, that we didn't need tax revenue, property tax revenue for. The true legacy in this community is not the Glenon Track Club or any other organization. The true legacy legacy of this community is the people who lived here and who sacrificed and volunteered to support the city of Glen Arden and religiously pay their taxes and their property taxes. So I don't see why if we can give our these organizations twenty-five hundred dollars and two thousand dollars and have them in the budget every year, we can't give our citizens one time out of eighty years a five hundred dollar tax rebate. So, yeah, there's a lot of things on the table, but there's always been a lot of things on the table, but this wasn't a concern when we're bringing up, you know, redoing a council chamber for almost, asking for almost a million dollars for redo of a council chamber. And we only in there twice a month. One meeting is only ten minutes long and the other meeting is maybe two and a half hours long. So, yeah, we should be giving our citizens a rebate. They're the true, they're the true legacy organization in this community. And I'm not understanding why there would be a problem giving them anything back when we have such a surplus. If we, if we can kick eight million dollars into an investment account, I think we can take some of that money and give it back to the people while we have, while we have a chance to do it this one time. This is the opportune time to do it. Again, we were blessed with the opera funds, which allowed us to do a lot of things, a lot of capital projects. And I don't think it's, I don't think it's a terrible thing to do to give back to citizens who basically built this community, the true legacy organization. A five hundred dollar tax rebate. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Harry. Any other comments as far as this resolution? Here and now, we'll move on to a resolution to Red Lift Architects. City elevator installation. City Manager Haber?
Yes, the representative from Red Lift Architects is here, Tanika Felder. If you have any questions for her and the material that's in the resolution that is also that is attached is the proposal from her company. And get the total. Total contract of twenty-three thousand four hundred and fifty, of course, not including permit costs or construction management services, which probably, the construction management, we will probably have CPJA do in order to get help us with the permits and the stormwater management waiver fee business. So the recommendation is to resume an agreement with the original architect group that had done the drawings previously and to have them reengage and complete the process for submission to the county for approval to get moving on putting an elevator in. Ms. Felder is here if you want to ask her questions.
Thank you, Senator Haber. You did not let me know we was having additional company tonight. I would have acknowledged her earlier. Thank you, Ms. Felder, for joining us. Council members, the floor is yours to ask any questions. You have a Senator Haber or Ms. Felder?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Harry?
How you doing, Ms. Felder? Good seeing you again. I've been on the council since we've been working with you. So can I ask you a question? So where are we with the actual plans? I know, I know we've been going round and round on them plans and I know things are changing. So where are we actually with the architectural drawings and everything?
Well, you know, as you can remember, this project was done back in two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen. And, and it just remained dormant for, you, you, you know, we were, I was on the committee then. So what we have to do is actually go back because it was based off of older codes. So now we have to go back and reassess the codes. I think we can pretty much stay with the, with the design, the way we had it, but we have to shift some things around. We also have to get a different structural engineer to work on the project because the previous one, I believe, is no longer in business. So we have a new structural engineer who will complete their portion of the drawings. And then the original mechanical, electrical plumbing engineer, we still work with him. So he'll be working on, on the drawings as well. So we, we need to go back through and make some changes. We have to also re-specify the elevator. Because again, this was ten years ago. So we have to, and they have some better ones where we possibly can get rid of the elevator machine room that we originally had designed. We can probably go with the machine room this one. So there's some things like that that we need to tweak based off of newer technology and newer, newer codes.
Okay, then you, you'll need to submit the plans for permitting and all of that.
That's correct. That's correct. We'll have to, once we, once we make those adjustments, then we'll have to submit everything back through Prince George's County for permit review.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Harry. Are there any other questions? Vice President Ferguson?
Yes, I don't have a question. Just an administrative change on the sponsor, which should have been Councilman Herring. Co-sponsors, myself and Harrison. It has, it has all of us as sponsors. He was the sponsor. Should have been a sponsor. If I'm looking at the right thing, one.
Yeah, Council President?
The way I see it, it has Vice President Ferguson, Councilman Harrison and Councilman Beharren. And you say that it shouldn't be that way?
Originally, the request was the sponsor being Councilman Herring. And co-sponsors, myself and Harrison.
Oh, okay. All right. I'm sorry, Council Clerk?
That's okay. I couldn't hear her. There's something wrong with my speaker. So I just needed clarification in order to make those changes on the resolution. Thank you.
Yeah, it's just, it's just moving, right now they're all sponsors. And this is moving Vice President Ferguson and Harrison to co-sponsors and only keeping the Councilman Beharren as the sponsor.
Yes, thank you.
And Councilwoman Jones?
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, Ms. Felder. How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
All right, I know that the, the cost and the proposal that you presented to the city is for your services and for getting the permits and things like that. But roughly, how, how, how much do you think this project is going to cost the city?
I, I was trying to, I was thinking somewhere around the high two hundreds, maybe?
Two hundred thousand?
Some in the high two hundreds, low threes. It just depends on what the elevator costs come in. But once we get back into the drawings again, then we can provide some preliminary costs.
Okay, so do you all select, do you all have an elevator company? Do we have to select one?
No, no, we'll specify the elevator company.
Okay, okay. So what companies do you all normally use?
It'd be between Schindler, Otis and Kone.
Okay, all right. Thank you so much. Have a good evening.
You too.
Okay. Well, I'm excited for this project. It's long overdue. So I'll be excited to get this up and going. So are there any other questions before we let Ms. Felder go? Here and now, Ms. Felder, thank you for joining us. And we look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, sorry, I'm going back and forth between screens. Elevator. Next up is a resolution for state highway three-year salt agreement for winter road treatment. Are there any questions from council members? Are there any questions from council members on this resolution?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Harry.
Yes, Mr. Simpson. Will we be still picking up at the same location that we've been previously picking up?
Mr. Simpson?
Uh, yes, sir. I'm sorry about that. Uh, yes, sir, we will.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Any other questions or comments? Here now, we'll move right along to a resolution authorizing catering services for the twenty-twenty-three city holiday party. Any questions or comments on this resolution?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Harry.
And um.
I'll bring it up so you can so we can look at it while you talk about it.
Yes, I just wanted to ask the sponsor, uh Councilman Ferguson, you know, you're you're giving a cost for exactly what you need. You don't want to bump that up a little bit, just in case there's some additional cost for something?
Vice President Ferguson.
Hi, um, yeah, I can do that. Um, if you have a dollar figure in mind.
I was just saying, I would take it up to um seven thousand.
Seven thousand?
Hmm.
Okay.
Because that's within the budget, right?
Yes.
Yeah, just in case. I mean, if you don't use it, you can always use it for something else, but just in case.
Okay.
Yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Harry. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. There we go. Hearing none. Next up is a resolution to appoint Chelsea Alcor to the Glenard Youth Committee. Question or comments from council members?
You said to.
Councilman Harry, did she say something?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yeah, um, yeah, I do have a question, uh, Mr. President.
Yes.
Yeah, and since this is the Glenon Youth Committee, I would like to um interview this person.
Okay.
This is my preference. All right.
All right, we'll work to set that up.
All right, thanks.
Next up, a resolution uh on the appointment of James Green as code manager. Um, this is actually what any discussion on this will actually fall under um a closed session. I do believe, unless someone can correct me if I'm wrong. So we'll keep it moving. Uh, a resolution to purchase a dump truck with plow and spreader. Any comments from council members?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Harry.
Yeah, did we? No, we didn't. Okay, no, that's right. That's I'm good. I'm good. This is for dump truck.
Correct. Correct. City, uh, not city manager. Um, well, city manager Haber, if you want to comment on it.
Uh, yes, it's a dump truck and a plow and spreader um for uh obviously for winter use.
Okay, Ford F five fifty dump truck?
Uh, Mr. Simpson would need to answer that.
Uh, Mr. Simpson?
Good evening. Yes, sir, my thing.
Do they have warranty on this truck? Is it?
Sir, will be a a brand-new twenty-twenty-three uh F five fifty uh dump truck with the warranty.
Okay.
I'll make sure uh the information is included uh with you and for you. Once we make that.
There will be training and making sure everybody certified whoever drives is know what they're doing, because I don't want anybody's cars getting scratched up. Correct?
Yes, sir. I agree.
Okay, all right, thanks.
All right. Any other comments or questions as we waste this resolution? All right, well, Mr. Simpson, like you up for the next two. Um, next up is a resolution to purchase two lawnmowers. Any comments, questions?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Harry.
Yes, then Mr. Simpson, did we did we purchase recently purchased some lawnmowers?
Um, I believe there were two purchased, uh, if I'm correct, in twenty-twenty before I got there. Uh, and those are John Deere's. And as a matter of fact, the two John Deere's uh is is what I'm looking at um for twenty-twenty-four.
So the one, so the ones you're gonna replace, are those the Kabutas?
Uh, those are two, if I'm not mistaken.
They're what?
Uh, four rows.
Okay, all right, all right, thanks.
Okay. Moving on to resolutions of surplus cable equipment, public works truck, police vehicle and items from the nutrition center. Um. Haber, would you want to elaborate on this?
Uh, yeah, the um uh cable equipment list came from uh cable folks and Monet Ward. Um, our webmaster and CIO uh and Public Works Truck came from, I think there's uh just two vehicles. One is a police vehicle and the other is a a public works vehicle. The public works vehicle is just uh is one that's being replaced with this dump truck. Am I correct in saying that, Charles?
Uh, no, that was uh.
Or was that last year?
Yes, that was last year.
Okay. So there are two, there are two vehicles, one one police and one public works.
Any questions or comments from council members?
Yes, Mr. President.
Yes, sir, Councilman Harry.
So what are we gonna do? So what are we gonna do with these public works truck? The public works truck and the police SUV wants its surplus?
Uh, I suspect we'll try to get uh whatever we can uh in terms of scrap or if someone's interested in them. Uh, the police vehicle in particular uh is my understanding that it uh has uh it smokes when you try to start it. So it may be just fit for scrap. It's the old Tahoe.
Right. Um, also, well, I mean, I don't see the code enforcement vehicles. It's they're like they're parked in the parking lot and they're not moving, so they're not surplus? They're not being surplus?
That one is used for a spare and the other one uh soon as a code manager is hired, we're gonna let them evaluate. Um, because it will be for staff members who will be hired eventually. Uh, we are uh authorizing the budget to buy one code vehicle. So it's a matter of um, you know, timing on it. Um, if we, based on uh the when we hire uh, you know, uh code enforcement officers uh on staff, we have one staff member who's gonna be going uh into the police uh force uh at some point, assuming uh a passage of academy. And then, of course, we have one opening. Um, so um, that is what it looks like and I would rather not uh surplus a code vehicle on unless it's absolutely um mechanically not functional. So.
On an operational.
Uh, definitely one of them is and the other one I'd have to ask uh Charles to to give an opinion on that or we could ask Fleet to give us an opinion on it.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Councilwoman Jones.
Thank you, Council President. Uh, Councilman Herring uh proposed a question that I was gonna ask about the code enforcement vehicles. Thank you, sir, both of you.
All right. Hearing no other comments or questions on this resolution. Uh, we'll move on to um the totality of the uh administrative reports. Any comments or questions from council members or any other reports, the mayor's report, city manager, public works, chief of police, city treasurer reports? All right. Here now, we'll go right into the topics of discussion. One, we've already held. There's seven of them. Uh, well, we've already um discussed, that's the seven of four references, re-circuit, resurfacing. Um, and so we'll go up to uh HOA grant program. Councilman Harry?
Yes, uh, I just want to know where we at with that program, because I know the HOAs are they biting at the bit to get this money and I want them to get it. So where are we at with that? It seems like that's the only thing that's dragging on.
Mr. Curtis.
Uh, city manager Haber.
Yes, um, we have the final uh documents uh from a review of the um uh city attorney uh that was just completed and um and Mr. Himmler, who's our consultant, is putting them in form so that they the final form based on the recommendations of uh the city attorney and they should be available shortly. Uh, that was pretty much the holdup. The legal review uh was sent in August and it took a while to get the response. So it's pretty well done and it just has to be um finalized and then sent out to the HOAs.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Is it any estimated timeframe so that we can, you know, have a I mean, it it relates to how they've been coming back, the finalization process.
Okay, can you repeat that last part? I'm sorry, I didn't hear it.
Uh, just the estimated timeline uh for it to be finalized instead though.
Yes, I I I think probably this week we will have the final documents if
Okay.
If, you know, um, I'll check with Mr. um Himmler to see, uh, and he may have already sent them and I just haven't seen them yet either. But um we just, I know that this last week we finished, we finalized the um Glenard Housing Authority documents and that has been sent uh to them. So HOA is next.
Thank you. Just wanted that expectation, because I know I I I'm pretty sure Councilman Herring, I know he wants to sit down and it's been getting some um inquiries about it. I have to, I'm pretty sure other council members have as well. So for citizens who are watching, just wanted to give them some sort of, you know, definitive expectation. Of course, it could be this week or it could not be next week, but at least there's a sense of expectation of, you know, when it's going to be done as opposed to just being out there. So. All right, uh, next up is the expungement fair. Councilman Harry?
Yes, oh, and let me just go pivot pivot back to the uh HO grants. Have the um housing authority grant been, have they reached out to you for that?
Just about it?
Yes, they have, and that that conversation happened last week.
Okay, great. Okay. So, yeah, for the expungement, I just want to give the council overview of um what we did and I'm actually gonna send you out a report. I meant to get this to you earlier, but I wanted to make sure I got all the numbers in. So technically, um, basically, I think we did better that this year with grant, I mean, with expungements than we did last year. Last year, we did about eighty something. This year, we did about a hundred. We, excuse me, we uh we we processed a hundred and nineteen applications. And we actually uh submitted a hundred and five uh applications, because fourteen um applications were not eligible for expungement. And um the good thing is a lot of them were um what they call not criminally uh responsible. The charges were um not criminally responsible. So when they're not criminally responsible, there's no fee. There's they they just you just gotta process the papers and then they'll expunge it. And we had actually um thirty that we had to pay a fee for um that were actually guilty. And so we just spent like nine hundred dollars on 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 uh the applications, paying for uh expungement applications. And then we had food, IT services, gift cards. So had a total expenses of about four thousand one hundred and twenty-six dollars. So I will send this out to everybody. Um, let you can see um what we did. I I think it's a great that we, you know, we exceeded last year, but last year we did have the glitch where we started a little late. Um, so I mean, in all in all, it looked like we we've done close to two hundred expungements in the last two years, close to it. Um, I think that's a great number. Um, you know, we are having an issue with some people who the ones that are not eligible, most of those are people who had hu- handgun charges. And instead of marijuana, handgun charges are not expungable. Um, no matter what it is, I mean, a lot and the sad part about it is a lot of the people had these handgun charges when they're like sixteen, seventeen years old. They're like thirty, forty years old now and they're still hanging over their head. So, you know, I know I reached out. Uh, I along with Councilman Harrison, we're reaching out to the delegate, I mean, the Senator Benson and the delegates about this. Seeing if they can offer some relief on one of the sessions that allow for it. But you know, it's 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 with all the gun violence and everything, it's kind of tricky. Nobody really want to take that step to put guns back in somebody's who had a gun's hand. So it's 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 an issue. Um, but again, I do appreciate uh the support of the council for that event. I think we did a great job and we able to help a lot of people. So um, thank you. That's it.
You, um, I I think it's a very important event. Um, in the state of Maryland, you could be falsely accused. Have the case thrown out uh and have that charge still on your record. Uh, and I think that's an injustice for um for those who are falsely accused and an injustice for those who are trying to turn their lives around after, you know, serving their dues and uh moving on with their lives. So um, I I appreciate you, Mr. Herring and uh Councilman Hairston for uh continuously putting this on and I hope that we could do more this year, that we can start on time and um I don't know, maybe extend it and just be on the same page so we get, we can service our community and others as uh as much as we can. So, thank you, uh, Councilman Hairston and Councilman Harry. Next up is uh, the hair and you on the roll, city events.
Yeah, you might not get this again, though. Um. City event. I this is just a just a just to put this out there. Just I think our staff and, you know, everybody need to know. When we're planning events, we need to make sure that, you know, they check with everybody, the council and everybody else, the mayor, whoever. Because we're getting some overlap of events, you know, and and like with Glenon Day, you know, this you normally, we don't plan anything on Glenon Day because it's a big event and, you know, we got a wrap-up and everything, but they're planning an event on Glenon Day. Um, you know, so we had to wrap up everything up in the goal room so the people can come in there and uh set up. So I just think we just need to make sure there's some communication, you know, um uh uh city hall wide about events and planning events and checking with everybody who's, you know, who could have an event, you know, administration, you know, let uh the legislative body, you know, um, goal room, all of those, just to make sure. And that's all I wanted to say, because overlaps, you know, is is causing a lot of trouble, because, you know, you you have overlap and then you gotta move it somewhere else and we, you know, you advertise it and all this other stuff. So just make sure that people reach out to each other to make sure that we are on the same page when it comes down to having citywide events. And that was it for that.
Thank you, Councilman Harry. I think it's a great idea. Is that, just thinking of that, is there um like a city? I know we have the city calendar, but is it linked? Can it be linked to our outlet calendars? Like, for example, I know at uh at work, I can have my calendar and I can also pull in you know, my staff calendars and my boss calendar. Is there something where we can have just a citywide calendar and pull it in so that at any time, you know, those who have city emails can click to see what's going on uh in a city where there's a goal room event or uh, you know, Cedar Glenard an event?
I thought you could share your calendars, you know, with other, you know, departments or the staff. Have a city, a citywide calendar, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. All right, we could look into that, I guess. Councilwoman Jones?
Or master list of the city events. So everybody will know that this city event has been um the the persons that are the, the persons that are planning the city event, like Glen Arden Day, uh, we're gonna have that on September sixteenth. Um, if, if somebody's already, uh, uh, planned and, uh, put the event for, uh, what else, whatever on, uh, whatever date, if the date, if, if some, if somebody already has a date, then um, you can't just go and schedule that date the same day, because that date's already been taken for that event?
Yeah, I mean, I'm fine with that, and it just seems that it's, it's logical to me to have that, something like that, uh, in place. Um, that's at a drop of a, or in reach of a click on your mouse, or city emails, so. All right, um, uh, Mr. Herring, I already touched on resurfacing. So we'll move on to, uh, well, thank you, uh, Councilwoman Jones, harassment in the workplace training.
Okay, uh, I was, uh, I was able to take the, uh, harassment in the workplace training from, um, our city, uh, insurance company, Legit, uh, did the presentation, which I thought was an awesome presentation, very enlightening. The, uh, gentleman, the, uh, facilitator that did the, uh, the attorney that did the, uh, presentation, he mentioned that he also does a presentation for, uh, mayor and councils, because we also hold a responsibility in being, um, uh, not, uh, harassing in the workplace. So there's certain guidelines that, you know, that they, they have put together. Uh, because he kept saying through his, throughout his presentation, that he didn't wanna see the city go into any type of litigation. This is why they do this, and he was glad that the city reached out to them to come and present it to all of the employees. I thought it was a bit, like I said, very enlightening, and I think that the, uh, presentation that he has for, uh, a mayor and council, that we as a mayor and council body should also take advantage of that, um, presentation, so that we can, uh, that, that we'll know that, uh, there are certain things that we're held responsible and accountable for also in the workplace, to make sure that employees enjoy, uh, uh, a, a great workplace, a place to work in where it's, uh, free of any type of harassment. It's not just, well, it's, yeah, it does cover harassment, all types of harassment in the workplace. So, uh, I, I think I gave the, the contact information to the council president. Hopefully, he'll reach out to him, and we can schedule something for the mayor and council to attend this, uh, seminar to, uh, be enlightened on, uh, harassment in the workplace. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jones. I fully support this, just, uh, speaking with the gentleman, I forgot his name, uh, but speaking with the gentleman briefly. He's, uh, excited to come in here, um, and just, um, inform us on things that some of us may not be aware of, so. Uh, we'll send out, um, an availability. I, he is flex, he said that he was flexible to do it in evening times when, you know, we are available, and it should only take, uh, between thirty minutes to an hour, um, so we could set up a special meeting, uh, for that purpose. Any other comments or questions as it relates to this topic of discussion? Okay. Next up is Ethics Commission certification to the state. Vice President Ferguson?
Yes, okay. I was able to, um, download the form that was, that's required for the state ethics commission certification, and, um, filled that out, and then had, um, uh, one of the members of the commission, uh, sign, and, and, and put in their information that was necessary, and sent it back to, um, city manager Habiter, uh, who, uh, sent it to the attorneys, because they requested to look over the form before it was permitted. Um, city manager Hab, have you heard anything back?
I have not.
Okay, so we need to look into that, because it was due on October one?
Yes.
Okay. So you, you're gonna do that?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, and last one is, uh, you again, Councilor, Vice President Ferguson, resume submitted for Ethics Commission.
Yes, we had a resume, um, submitted, um, we did post, just supposed, um, of a need to have, um, you know, um, the commission bill, so we do have that, so we need to, um, hope to interview that person.
Okay.
Right, right now, we do have four people. So we need that fifth person, um, so, um. That's the only one that we have. Um, I think we did have some inquiries, um, but I don't know whether or not, um, council, um, clerk, Valley Walls, did you get any more?
Um. Council President?
Yes, Council Clerk.
Uh, Council Vice President Ferguson, there were two inquiries. Um, and, uh, I sent them information that I had, but I haven't heard back from, from either of the women that in, inquired. Do you want me to get back with them and see if they're interested, or just?
Yes, could you please? Yes.
Okay, sure.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you, Council President.
Okay, so, uh, just wanna recap the interviews that we have on deck. Interview for, um, code enforcement, interview for, uh, um, the youth advisory council, and interview for the Ethics Commission. So Council Clerk, if, you know, you could, um, were necessary, work with the administration to set up those interviews, uh, administration and council, uh, to set up those interviews, that'd be greatly appreciated. Uh, and again, for these interviews, we don't need to come into public, um, meetings, it'll, they'll be closed, closed meetings, closed sessions.
Will do.
All right. Well, that is,
President?
Yes, Madam Clerk.
I'm sorry, before you go in, uh, to adjournment, I wanted to ask, I, you, I talked, I'd spoken with you and Council Vice President Ferguson, with regard to the, the copies that are made, um, as you can see, this coming, uh, hearing, I'm wondering if the council would agree that from here on out, when, when copies are made for the, uh, public hearing, if the council's willing to hold on to those, unless there's any adjustments made to use them when we go into regular session, because we're, we're just, it's, it's just a lot of copying, especially when we have a lot of legislation. You look puzzled, do you understand?
No, 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 I, I'm, my, this isn't a puzzle look, this is a complete agreement look.
Oh, okay. I just wanted to see what the rest of the council thought about it. It's, it's a lot of copying, and we, we go through quite a bit of ink.
Yeah. Any comments from, uh, or pushback from council members? Yeah, so we'll keep, uh, you know, our resolutions, um, from this meeting, with the exception of those that need adjustments, we will need those, um, those adjusted, uh, documents. For those who request them, mine, all soft copy, so, um, I think so. Most, uh, are soft copy, uh, but no, completely understand. Councilman Harry?
Oh, yeah, Mr. President, so let me say, so let me see, I get a clearance, and so after the public hearing, we just leave our folders there, so you can just pick them up and return them to us at the regular meeting. That's what we're saying.
Madam Clerk?
What, um, whatever's your preference. I know sometimes people take the folders and they don't bring them back, so, um, whatever's your preference.
Sorry, Council, Councilman Harry, what did you say?
Said it's only two people. She got that list already.
I didn't wanna call out anyone.
I ain't calling out no names, I'm just saying it's two people.
All right.
All right, okay.
We'll save some trees. All right, so with that, um, the council is, uh, going to, uh, adjourn to closed session to discuss a legal matter and personnel, um, as public know, or doesn't know, council generates the right to go into closed session anytime during public meeting. Um, that is pursuant to the anti-codameric, Article ten, five oh eight A. Uh, so with that, is there a motion to adjourn to a closed session to discuss a legal matter and personnel? Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, could you do a roll call to go into closed session, please?
Councilman Hairston?
Yes.
Councilman Herring?
Yes.
Uh, Councilwoman Jones?
Yes.
Council Vice President Ferguson?
Yes.
Council President Curtis?
Yes. Thank you, with that. The vote carries, uh, for our citizens. Thank you for joining the, our work session. Uh, I hope to see you at the public hearing to hear your comments on the, um, pending legislation, and the following week on the regular meeting, on the vote on the legislation. With that, have a good night. The open portion of this meeting is now closed.